Next item.
Next item is Advanced Ed accreditation.
So, we have some more positive, and I'm gonna let Ms. Farage speak, but we were at a couple of conferences giving presentations through Advanced Ed. And the Board knows from the meeting that we had, special meeting in February for accreditation review. So, I'm gonna let Ms. Farage speak to that right now, and just what happened, and we basically can congratulate everyone on five-year accreditation renewal. So, it's a lot of positives.
Good evening, everyone. Today is a night of celebration.
Yeah.
Congratulations to the entire district, staff, students, parents, and to our Board and staff members. We have just officially received the re-accreditation, renewal of the accreditation of Advanced Ed, which is again a national organization that accredits schools and districts nationwide and internationally. So, again, we have a wonderful model in the district that amulates what Advanced Ed does when they go on school reviews. And we have it right here locally, and they were very impressed with our model. We did go to the Midwest Regional Conference to present our model by invitation from the Advanced Ed Midwest Regional Directors, who came and visited us in Dearborn to learn more about what we do in the district. So, congratulations again, and I wanted to congratulate the community as a whole because this was an effort done by the community. They interviewed hundreds of stakeholders for the review, and they've done extensive examination of our practices across multiple domains and standards that they go by, like I said, nationally and internationally for this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I wanna let you know too, Ms. Farage is gonna be sitting on the State Advisory Committee for Advanced Ed because of the work that's being done in the district and her leadership. So, congratulations.
Great. Next item, please.
We'll give a chance. Next item is our.
I don't know if we have a chance to sit down.
Acknowledging donations. Dr. Maliko.
Dr. Chokol will be coming up.
Oh, okay.
A donation of $524.70 has been offered to Miller Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for the PVAT, the Picture Vocabulary Acquisition Test Kit. Number two, a donation of $200 has been offered to Whitmarbles Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a color printer. Three, a donation of $1,793 has been offered to Maples Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for the Citywide Art Show. Four, a donation of $1,009 has been offered to William Ford Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Second Step. Five, a donation of $500 has been offered to Nowland Elementary by Blue Hands United to be used for materials and resources in Caitlin Lacy's ASD classroom. Six, a donation of office furniture has been offered to Fortson High School by the American Red Cross to be used in Fortson's office to replace broken or damaged furniture. And number seven, a grant of $199,598 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Michigan State Police Competitive School Security Grant Program to be used for card reader secure entrances throughout the district.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the Secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. Excuse me. For the benefits of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The Board President reserves the right to limit times. I only have one blue card under non-agenda items. This is from Ms. Roxanne McDonald. She'd like to speak to us regarding the election.
Good evening, President Mead, Superintendent Maliko, members of the Board. What an exciting night. This is wonderful. I wanted just to address you for a quick moment, but the first thing that I have to say is anyone that knows me, I have to acknowledge that it is Veterans Day, and I want to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day, and thank our veterans and their families for their service and their sacrifice. I want to take just a moment of your time to thank the community for their faith in my ability to serve as a trustee on Henry Ford College and Dearborn Public Schools. I also want to commend all of my opponents on their professionalism and their desire to serve. With the current state of our politic, political climate, it's crucial that we set an example of respect and civility. And we have to set that example for our students, and all of the opponents that I had did exactly that. So, I just want to acknowledge that. I also felt great pride as I drove around on Election Day around the community because you could see the engagement, and you can see the camaraderie. And it was even present in examples of people that were supporting opposition candidates. So, that just speaks volumes for our community and how we come together and we support each other. So, to those voters that did not support me, that supported other candidates, I just want you to rest assured that I will work hard to earn your confidence and your respect. And I'm looking forward to once again adding my voice to the conversation and moving the college and the district forward on behalf of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Finance Committee meeting October 8th, 2018. Policy Committee meeting October 8th, 2018. Regular P-12 meeting October 8th, 2018. City Relations Committee meeting October 17th, 2018. And Special P-12 meeting, Study Session, October 29th, 2018. Those are Board Reports 18-44 through 48. Recommended actions, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
It's so moved. Support.
Was that a second?
Yes.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, oh, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The unanimous decision. Next item, please.
Special reports. P-12 Audit Report. Dr. Maliko and Mr. Thomas Wall.
I thought you didn't have a report.
I don't. Just an introduction. As part of the state law, we're required to have an annual audit, and that was done by Plant Moran this year. And with us today has Tom Marchese and Jeff Higgins. Jeff Higgins had to go to another engagement in another school district. We have Tom Marchese is gonna give us a brief presentation.
Thanks, Tom.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Glenn. So, I'll start off with just a high level of what we've delivered from our audits. We did a basic audit and a single audit, and went into detail of those reports earlier with the Board during a committee meeting. We offered unmodified opinions on both reports, which is the highest level of assurance we can offer. So, I'll get into the slides now. First slide just lays out the general fund assets and liabilities of the districts. Breaks out the components in the pie chart form for the assets of 66.7 million, and the liabilities and deferred outflows of 36.2 million. So, the chart shows a pretty consistent layout. The largest asset relates to the state aid receivable for July and August, and the largest liability relates to accrued pays for July and August for teachers that worked the 10-month school year and are owed over the course of the summer. This next slide represents the general fund revenues. So, in 2018, there's 218, $216 million, which represents a 3% increase from 2017. The components of revenue have remained consistent with prior years, the largest component being state aid. These graphs represent the general fund expenditures and transfers. You can see in 2018, there's 216.7 million total general fund expenditures and transfers. The rising pupil count and increased revenues provided for the expenditure increase in the current year, an increase of 7.9%. So, the spending components remain largely unchanged proportionally with the increased transfer activity to the non-major capital projects fund. So, this next graph lays out the general fund expenditures by object. You can see that it's sorted out by seller and fringes, which represent 88% of the general fund total expenditures, which is pretty consistent with a school district as people are the primary resource of the district itself. So, this next slide just tells a story about where the districts come from in the past few years in terms of operating results and building fund balance. You can see in 2013, the district had a reduction in fund balance, general fund balance of about $2.5 million. For the past year since 2014, there's been favorable increases in fund balance. You can see the very favorable increase in 2017 and a continuing trend in 2018. So, this final slide offers where the school district is at in terms of fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, and it compares to the MSBO guidelines along with the state average for school districts across the state. So, the state average for school districts in 2017 is about 12.8%. In 2018, the school district of Dearborn is at about 14.6%. So, you're well above the average, but you're below the MSBO prescribed threshold or suggested threshold of 15 to 20%. So, to put that in a bit layman terms here, the 14.6% represents about eight weeks of operating expenditures within the general fund. So, that means if the district did not receive funding from various governments, the district could run for eight weeks. So, it's not an entire school year, and we continue to recommend building that, adding to the financial stability of the district and building these reserves up for unforeseen circumstances in the future. That concludes the presentation, and as always, it was great to work with Tom. Big thanks to Elaine Sterrett, Chris Miskel, and the rest of the business department for another smooth audit, and appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve a district with all these accolades and awards. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Trustee Elaine.
We were sent, all of us were sent a larger packet of about 83 pages to read, which we appreciate deeply, of course. But I want to ask Dr. Maliko, I'm assuming that that entire thing will be put up, the report will be put up on the district's website so that anyone can go and look at that for transparency reasons?
Sure, we can get that up there. And if it's part of the Board, it would go in the Board Document section. So, yeah, we can do that.
Possibly the same at the college as well, since it applies to the college in addition.
Yeah, it's a good point. Thank you. Can I mention one point too? You know, and I want to commend the Board on this because I know that was one of the things under Superintendent Wiston when I worked for him, and now with me here, and Superintendent Wiston took us through some very tough, challenging financial times. And that's when our fund balance was below 5% at that threshold, and the Board was constantly, you know, guiding us, guiding Superintendent Wiston, and then me when I took over to increase that. And so, although we're below that, you know, we're close to the 15, but it's grown quite a bit in the last three years. And again, I credit Superintendent Wiston for getting us through some tough financial times, and I credit the Board as well for their leadership in that area. Thank you.
Trustee Elaine.
You just mentioned the fund, the fund balance, but I have to say, you know, at one point, the Michigan Legislature was looking with envious eyes at districts that were running too much of a fund balance in excess of 15%. So, we like to have a fund balance, we need to have a fund balance that's sufficient to cover our summer staff payments, but we can't pile up too much. So, we have to be, I mean, we have to be cautious. First of all, the money is here now for the people, for the students that are here now. But also, when you get political signals like that, and I'm going back a ways, obviously, but it makes us skittish to produce too much of a fund balance.
Interesting. Trustee Patterson.
And I would just like to add, when we were having those really difficult financial times, it wasn't just the Board's direction, and it was the sacrifice of our employees. They took significant decreases in not only pay and benefits, but just in what was available to have in the classroom. And so, quite frankly, we all worked together in order to rectify the situation, and everyone has continued to understand, which is why we have the fund balance we have today, because everybody is trying to be a little bit more realistic in how we approach our finances, understanding that it could quickly disappear if it isn't well managed. So, I think everybody deserves credit when it comes to that.
That's a good point. Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And your next item, please.
Next item is 2018 Student Growth and Achievement.
So, we have Dr. Patterson who'll come up. We usually give this report every November.
Hello, Dr. Patterson.
Good evening.
While he's getting that up to, I also want to commend Mr. Wall and the work that he's done since he's been here in really streamlining the process of the budget and the work done there. Very professional, and so we're very glad to have him and his team coming out of the Finance Department.
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening, President Mead, Dr. Maliko, and Board Trustees. Tonight, I'm here to review our student achievement data from the 2018-19 school year. Before I begin looking at our data, I have a few short updates for you. The first one is on our Standards-Based Grading Committee. You've heard from teachers earlier in the year and then from a student about standards-based grading. We have been discussing this topic in our Secondary Assessment Committee since the beginning of the year. It was actually brought to the agenda from teachers last year because there have been a number of them that had been practicing this type of grading practice within the district for the last year or two. So, I just wanted to provide you an update on where we are with that process. So, this year, it's really about getting personnel from the, from around the district to get together and have conversations about what that looks like. It's a very complicated topic. I mean, grading has looked traditionally the same way for several decades in public schools. So, looking at an alternate way of doing it is something that definitely takes a little bit of time, and it's a very philosophically kind of deep process as well because it gets to the root of what are the purposes of assigning grades. And so, it is going to take us this year to kind of go through what some of that background looks like, what it looks like in the classroom for those classrooms that are doing it. And I think we have around 20% of the teachers at the high schools that are doing it based on what we've heard back from some of the principals. So, this year, what we're doing is we're meeting its teachers, counselors, administrators to take a look at how that looks, what it might look like. Next year, if we decide to move forward with this, we might do a more structured pilot with it, but this year, we're really just trying to see how it looks across the district. And then, if there were any recommendations to make any changes to our grading policies, it would not be for at least another year after that until we have had time to really thoughtfully think through this, and then also get a lot of input from all of the stakeholders across the district. The second update is just to provide you a little bit of information about the parent dashboard that's available on My School Data. This is something that the state released last year, and what this is meant to be is a very parent-friendly way to look at all of the data that revolves around our schools. So, this is something that shows the performance for every public school in Michigan. This is not the same view as the accountability data that we see through the school index page, but what it's meant to do is provide parents with some easily accessible information on schools. There are a number of different factors, 20 available at the school level, three years of data. It provides information on similar schools, both demographically and then similar schools in the region. And the other reason I wanted to just mention this to you is we're required to share this information with all of our parents. And so, last year, Mrs. Fatimi Farage, when she was in her position as Director of School Improvement, met with the principals. We provided them with some information to hand out to parents during PTA meetings. And so, we do feel like we've been trying to promote this tool for parents to review some of the data that's out there on all of our schools.
Is that translated by any chance?
Yes. Yes. So, there is a drop-down menu to where you can translate it, and since it's a web-based program, it uses, I believe, Google Translate to translate it in any of the languages that Google uses.
About the grading, the first item that you mentioned, is it so complicated because of the difference between competency-based education as opposed to other kinds of education?
Yeah. So, there's a few shifts that happen with standards-based grading that are, that are different than the traditional base grading system. One of those is changing from the zero to 100-point scale that so many of us are familiar with, where anything in the 90s is the As, 80s are Bs, to a four-point scale where that shows different variations of proficiency in a particular standard. The other one is that rather than giving a single grade that covers an entire subject like math or biology, it's broken down into as fine-tuned as each individual standard. It could be a collection of standards together so that a student is not receiving one overall grade in that subject, but is being graded on different areas of knowledge. And then, one of the, another shift is that it is based mostly, I would say almost primarily on student performance in those standards. So, things like homework and other things are not included in the grade to the same degree as they're rolled into other grading systems where homework might be 20% or other types of projects. And then, a fourth shift is that students often have multiple chances to show proficiency so that if four is showing, you know, a high level of knowledge in that, if their first attempt shows that they don't really have it that much, they have multiple opportunities to get to that point. And those opportunities are not averaged together that we, like we would typically do in our traditional grading-based system. So, if a student gets a zero early in the year, that's often something that's hard to recover from. And with standards-based grading, there's a few different ways you can kind of take a look at that historical trajectory, but it's often looking at the most kind of recent proficiency in that area, whether taking the last few, the most recent, or kind of an average of the last few. Those, I would say, are probably the four biggest changes to how our traditional grading system works.
No wonder it's complicated. Superintendent?
I just want to say too that I'm well-versed in this because when I was Principal at Solano, we actually piloted the model. So, I've really followed the research. I have top researchers in the field, including Dr. Marzano, one of them, Rick Stiggins. One of the things I'd agree, and it comes from our professional learning community with Dr. Reeves who's been here, is the four-point scale provides where the student is not penalized to the point where they can never get out by a couple of possibly mistakes or a missed assignment or whatever it may be. Because when you get a zero, that sets them up for almost no way to get out of a statistical ability to do well. And so, sometimes students then give up. And so, the four-point is more, is a better model, and the research shows it. It's been around for actually over 10 years. It's just that a lot of times in education, you know, and we're slow to move on things. And I'm not saying Dearborn, I'm saying just in the education profession as a whole because of the norms we've had. And, you know, we can bring up the year-round schooling as possibly another. So, anyway, that is an area that I'm well-versed in. I know Dr. Patterson is, and I just wanted to point that out too, that it provides a lot more fair ability for students so they're not just stuck in that hole for the rest of the year.
Does it have anything to do with knowledge and skills? I mean, the grading system is on knowledge, but what about skills?
It would be based really on what the schooling teachers feel are the most essential learnings that should be taking place within that, within that course.
So, that would include knowledge and skills?
Yes. Yes. And typically, those skills that build up to those higher-order understandings would be included.
So, that's included, and no wonder it's so complicated. Trustee Elaine.
I think that I understand it's not a zero-sum game like most grading is, where you have the typical bell-shaped curve, and people complain if there's grade inflation. So, it's everyone being able to show their own competence, and it's not me against you, and if I increase, you decrease.
Exactly. And part of the upfront work with making a switch like this is although we have levels of performance on our typical quizzes, like I said, typically 90% is an A, 80% is a B. One of the big shifts with this is setting very clear performance standards on every, on every one of our standards to show that if you're going to be at a level four in this, this is what it clearly needs to look at with criteria for that. So, it's very well communicated to the student, and they get feedback in terms of where their gaps are in meeting that.
So, it really is a growth measure.
Exactly.
Trustee Hamud.
So, I do have a couple of concerns right now as to how students across the board are being graded. And right now, they are being graded differently. So, you could take Teacher A, for example, who doesn't use standard-based training, and take the same class with Teacher B, and you're being graded differently. And, you know, maybe student in Teacher A's class is great at doing homework, is a hard worker, would still maybe used to the old model of things. Now, I don't know. Obviously, Dr. Maliko and others have more expertise, but I think that this brings a concern that students could be taking the same subject, end up with two different teachers, and then maybe being graded differently at this time. It might be beneficial or not beneficial. And I mention this because I have been hearing from a lot of parents about this, and I think because it is now, at least at the high school, a new concept that now they're starting to hear about and see. And from what I've been hearing, and I'd like to learn more about this, is much of the grading is subjective as to the teacher and how that teacher maybe views proficiency. And sometimes that does worry me because different factors play into what I view as subjective as opposed to what somebody else views as subjective. So, I don't know how we get around that. And obviously, there are a lot of questions that I have that we might not be able to answer today because we're still gathering data from this year. So, I just hope that going through the process, we're keeping that in mind, and that just like how we try to keep our curriculum the same, I would like to see it fair across the board for our students, even in how they are being graded, because that does bring some concern to me.
Yeah. And I think that those are all valid concerns, and we'll definitely address those during our meeting. I think that there are issues of inconsistency in every grading system. The way that I, as far as I know, that's being implemented at the high schools right now, at least a grade level or subject-level team are all implementing it together. So, there should be some level of consistency in terms of all the students taking algebra or English Language Arts at that, at that particular school. And then, one of the, the end goals of this, which also takes some time, is that inter-rater reliability across, you know, all of the teachers. And that, one of the reasons that this approach is appealing to a lot of our teachers is that it fits in with our PLC model, which is bringing together student work, scoring it together, taking a look at where the gaps are, and kind of bringing that consistency together. So, ideally, that, that rubric that is used to assign proficiency levels to students should hopefully be developed as a team, and there should ultimately be consistency within the building and then within the district as well. And it will take some time to get there, but we're, but hopefully, as we're making those steps forward, we're taking those things into consideration.
Thank you.
Trustee Pettler's call.
Well, I guess to tag on to Trustee Hamud's questions, because I too was worried about inconsistencies in this because it sounds like it's a voluntary program at this point that some teachers are choosing to implement and not others. And you kind of touched upon it, but I want to be reassured that there's some kind of professional training that goes along with this, number one, so that there is, that it isn't as subjective and that, and that everybody understands the rules, so to speak, so that's being applied evenly in different classroom settings, number one. And number two, does this, and since I'm not quite sure how the testing is looking, does it look different in these classrooms that are using this kind of scoring? Or are they able to incorporate the same coursework, the same test? Or are they able to incorporate the same coursework, the same tests that the traditional classes are using? Or have they had to change out some of that kind of, um, uh, material?
So, as to your first question, that there is a lot of professional development that needs to go into using a system like this. I, I do know that many of our teachers have attended PD in standards based grading, which is why they, they brought it back to the district in their own capacity. I, I cannot say if all the teachers that are presently doing it right now have received that. That's something I can definitely look into.
They may be kind of flying by the seat of their pants when it comes to this.
And that could be some, one area.
Which is what, what some of the problems might be inside the buildings where their students are concerned that they're not getting the same kind of feedback.
Can I mention though, the one way, and again, I still agree that we would need more training moving forward, but the district's commitment to the professional learning community, um, with, we have that extra time now in the contract where the teachers can meet. And then the whole model is also like Etzel, for example, um, the model that we went through when they were priority years ago, of that extra team time. So, all three high schools are also in the PLC pilot model. So, we're actually, rather than, um, having students released for an extra hour, they're staying an extra hour after school. All three high schools are in this model. And during that time is when you're going to create those rated reliabilities by working together on those assessments. And that is what the research says, is that you need to have those kind of common assessments in that standard grading. So, what would happen then is the training that they would get would then be led by, for example, Principal Martin or Principal Casebolt and his team. So, it would be a trainer or trainers model. So, even though someone didn't attend the conference, they would be coming back to their team and they would be providing that training. We would have to see how, I, I do still though agree that we need to be, um, if we're going to move in this direction, you know, we need more resources of training.
I was going to say, because right now, this is voluntary. If you, if you like it, you might get involved with it. And if you don't, you know, um, y- you're sitting in some other room somewhere. Okay. And so, then the next one about the testing?
Yes. And so, the, the assessments in, um, at least from what we've seen with some of the committee media members bringing forward, are essentially the same material, but often they need to be reworked slightly to fit into this type of grading policy. So, for, for example, if you gave an end of the unit quiz that might have typically had twenty questions and you graded it on how many percent correct students got, which is a very traditional way of doing that, you could use that same assessment, but you would really need to look at the, the level of each item on that test and say that if there were perhaps five really simple questions, that might be more aligned to a student's like minimal understanding of the standard. There could have been some more intermediate questions. And then there could have been a group of more rigorous questions that would really show their thorough understanding and application. And it would be more of which questions were they able to show proficiency on, not so much just a straight percent correct. Um, so, they would have to be kind of realigned into those levels of proficiency. And again, those should be determined by a team and communicated to the students.
Cool.
But we have to be assured that, that they're using that type of material.
Yes, yes. And those are all the things we'll be, we'll.
That's great work. That's really good work. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, now I'll begin taking a look at our achievement data from last year. I have quite a few graphs to show you, so I'll try to do my best to, to work through each one of these. Uh, the first graph is a review of something that we saw a few months ago, which is our NWEA growth data. Uh, again, just to remind you of how this graph is read, it shows, this particular one is for math. The other three subject areas that we assess, language, reading, and science look similar to this. The orange boxes on the bottom show what typically is seen in terms of growth based on NWEA's normed group that they, uh, that they create using students from across the nation. And this is based on RIT score points, which is the unit of measure on our NWEA test. So, in kindergarten, typically, students grow by seventeen points from fall to spring within a school year. And our students, um, last year showed twenty-nine, um, points of, of growth. And so, as you can see in every grade level moving across from K through eighth, our growth from fall to spring has typically exceeded what we see in the NWEA north norm group. Um, the remaining slides we're going to look at are going to be our state assessment data. And we're going to look at both proficiency and growth because those are two measures that our schools are held accountable for. Um, so, the next two slides are again, um, slides that you've seen before. These were provided to you in a board brief, um, I think late August, early September. Uh, what this is showing is our mathematics proficiency. So, this is the percent of students that met the proficiency target by either being proficient or advanced. In grades three through eight, this is through the M step. And in eleventh grade, this is through the SAT. Um, so, the three colors represent the state, which is our la- largest comparison group. Um, then the purple bar is Wayne County, which is our close geographic neighbors. And then the last bar is Dearborn. So, in math, you can see that, um, in most grades, we are within a few points of the state average and typically exceed, um, the average of Wayne County. In language arts, um, you'll see in grades three through five, we have a similar trend where we're around the average of the state, uh, above the Wayne County average. Um, but you will notice in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, this is an area that we've been focusing on this year. Our average is a little bit below the state and in a few grades, more on par with what Wayne County is looking at. Um, and in eleventh grade, um, we're roughly around where the state average is. Uh, the next two slides that I'm going to show you are, are growth that's measured, um, on M step. And this growth is slightly different than the NWEA metrics. I'll try to explain the differences. On M step, students are given what's called a student growth percentile. And the way that that is calculated is if a student in fourth grade, as an example, scores fourteen hundred on M step, that would be, which would be proficient. If the following year in fifth grade, they went up by fifty points, that student's growth would be compared to all the other students in the state of Michigan that also started at a fourteen hundred, um, in fourth grade. So, they'd only be compared to students that were roughly the same level of proficiency the year before. And then they would take a look at how much their score increased and then they would compare those student scores from highest to lowest. So, the students that had the highest growth compared to their peers would be in the ninetieth percentile and the upper percentile range. And those that were at the lower end of the group would be in the lower percentile ranges. So, fifty percent would mean that that student grew on average roughly, um, kind of in the middle of the pack compared to their, their peers. So, the state has determined or, or provided labels to this amount of growth. So, any student that falls within the lower thirty percent, they say that that growth is below average. Um, any growth between the thirtieth and sixty ninth percentile, roughly that forty percent in the middle, they say is average growth. And then above average growth would be anything between seventy and ninety ninth percentile. So, what this graph is showing is our growth from grades four through eight. Um, we can't have growth in third grade because they didn't take a test in, in second. Um, and then the gray bars in the background, um, show you those bands that would be what the state averages are for this. So, if you can take a look at fourth grade, um, we have thirty-one percent of our students that are above average growth and that would be compared to thirty percent for the state. We would have thirty-seven percent in the above average, our average growth, and then thirty-one percent. So, those are roughly equivalent to what we see across the state. Um, for fifth and sixth grade, we have slightly more students in the higher range than you would see at the, the state average. Um, seventh grade is the, the one area in math where our growth is slightly below the state, but in the other grades, um, it's roughly similar or slightly above the state averages. Uh, this is what it looks like for language arts. In fourth and fifth, um, you can see that the blue and purple bars extend down much farther. So, that shows that our growth is above state averages, um, and well above state averages in those two grades. However, sixth and seventh, um, well, actually, six were roughly state average. Um, seventh is one area that we're slightly below. And like we mentioned, that's an area that, um, we are focusing on this year with language arts. We also, um, want to make sure that our students, that our English learners are progressing in English language development. Um, as of right now, the state, um, well, actually, last week, the state finally released student growth data, um, on WEDA, but it wasn't ready in time to, to add to this presentation. What I just provided to you right now is our, the, the, the number, the percentage of students at each of the levels on WEDA. Um, so, WEDA is our assessment for English language development. Um, students that are just beginning to learn the English language would be scoring in the lower levels, which would be entering and emerging. And students that are progressing to where they're no longer going to need their English language support would be in the bridging and reaching categories. And our goal is, um, a student should reclassify within around five or six years progressing through these levels. Um, so, this just shows the distribution of our English learners and where they fall onto that test. Um, the one thing I wanted to point out is you'll notice that the bars look very different in the first two years of this graph versus the second two. Um, and that's because the, the consortium that writes WEDA re-leveled the test so that the cut points fit more closely to college and career readiness standards, which made it a little more difficult to, to reach those levels, which is why you'll see that the change in performance there. So, uh, I would like just to point out that the, the schools, um, take a look at this data and do a lot of data analysis and work with their teams. Um, this is linked to our data process where the, each of our schools do a needs assessment, working with their leadership team and staff at the beginning of the year. Um, and I also think, uh, Ms. Fatmi Faraj mentioned in a board brief that all of our principals are doing data presentations. Um, we've had a few already and they're, um, going to continue through the next month. Um, and then in terms of changes coming with assessment, um, we've seen quite a few of those over the last several years. Um, one new one this year is eighth grade M step is going to be replaced by PSAT eight. Um, and that will provide a continuum from eighth through eleventh, where our eighth graders will pe- take the PSAT eight nine. So, will our ninth graders, the tenth graders will te- take the PSAT ten. Um, and our eleventh graders will take the SAT. So, that should provide kind of a continuum of data from eighth through eleventh grade. Um, and then finally, um, a few takeaways is that our goal is to continually to increase our growth, trying to get as many of our students to that proficiency level before they graduate as possible. Um, one thing that's been mentioned a few times tonight were the, the years of cutbacks, um, that, that we saw several, um, years ago. Um, one thing that you might remember from our advanced ed review was, um, the need to kind of reinvest in our curricular materials and to get some common resources across our schools. We invested in a new math program last year. We're looking at new ELA curriculum, um, as well as some high school math programs. So, that's something that we're moving forward. And then we are continually trying to increase those high order thinking skills and rigor, like what you see at the, the STEM school in terms of trying to get kids to solve more complex ro- problems and being able to transfer their knowledge to, um, not just skill based knowledge, but higher order thinking skills.
Get them to think, huh?
Yes. Okay, so.
Trustee Elaine? Oh.
Yeah. No, that's the end of my.
Excuse me. Trustee Elaine?
Uh, Dr. Patterson, uh, I remember hearing that, uh, I think it was a presentation on, uh, True and See, that every year we turn over about ten percent of our population, um, with new children, students coming in and students moving out. So, I wonder, um, looking at this, i- do you know, do you have raw numbers and percentages for new students by grade level? I mean, what, how many students do we see coming in, in the high school level, uh, who are new? Do you know that? Can you pull out that data or no?
That's something we can definitely provide you in a, in an update. I don't think I have those numbers at the, um, at my fingertips right now, but that's something we can provide.
Trustee Hamud?
Going back to the slide with the ELD learners and how we kind of seen a drop there because of different credentials now and higher scoring that they have to meet, that's imposed on by the state.
Yes.
Um, uh, do we have a plan going forward? Um, do we need extra resources?
So, uh, we have, we did, uh, I think it was two years ago, invest in a higher number of ELD specialists. Um, so, that is a plan that has been taking place for the last few years. Our, it, our focus on some new English materials is also going to be something that, um, will target this population as well. And also, some of the resources that we're seeing in kindergarten and first grade with our reading by third initiatives are all focuses to that. Um, so, uh, those are some things that I, that I know that we are currently doing to, to focus on that. Um, even though that we have had this level change in the test to where students have to get a higher scale score to get in the expanding or bridging or reaching categories, we do, um, continue to reclassify students that are around the same number the last several years, roughly around a thousand each year that are exiting the EL program. So, uh, those numbers at least have not dipped since this change took place.
Has those nu- have those numbers been either consistent throughout or increasing?
So, three, the last three years, they've been, um, roughly around nine hundred or so, which has been a big increase from several years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Barry?
So, I want to go back to slide number six. This is probably a question for Dr. Malako. For over ten years I've been involved, I always see these reports and we compare ourselves to the state and the county. I mean, I know it's not acceptable to Dr. Malako. I know it's not acceptable to this board or our employees. But when you say the state average, if we're at thirty-six percent, our eleventh grades are thirty-six percent, if my eyes are through and me right, uh, are proficient in math. It means at the state level, there's some districts are probably at twenty percent and some districts are probably sixty or higher. What are the discussion, and I'm seeing here at the third grade level, it's a little bit higher and it just starts, keeps dropping, dropping, dropping. What do, what are the discussions at the cabinet level? What do, what is it that we need to do to change the direction of this?
Yeah, I mean, we, we want to look at the scores and, and, um, we, we have put together a plan, um, you know, looking at some of those higher level thinking skills. Um, at the elementary level, we switched to the new mathematics program that does take into account those, um, depth of knowledge, higher level skills. We're seeing the implementation of that right now as we go through the schools for school improvement. Um, the team members and Ms. Faraj can nod because the comments are being made about that it is more challenging actually for our students. But it is then more aligned with those type of assessments that are being implemented at both the state and the national level. Um, so, of, of course, we want to improve those scores. We'll continue to work on it. Um, and, um, you know, those are areas that we need to make improvements. At the same time, we're also, as we know, um, we presented last, um, month on the career and college readiness that includes both those students that want to go to the four year university and then other students that, uh, may be. Um, so, when you look at the eleventh grade assessment, that basically is looking at, when you take SAT, it's predicting success for the four year college. And some students are not necessarily going in that direction. Now, they all have to take it. But then we're looking at like college and admit- admittance exams, you know, like HFC and those things. So, two things. One, we need to work together. We need to improve the scores in Dearborn. We need to improve the scores in the state. Superintendent Wiston, that was his ten and ten, um, with the strategic plan. Secondly, um, I, I do think that you're going to hear more advocacy. And so, as you see the state scores, which, you have to compare the state. We presided you with the finance plan. You're going to hear more and more about this on a, on a state level. Um, showing, when you talk about EL students, we showed you a couple of months ago how underfunded we are at those levels. So, and funding is not the only thing that's needed, but it is one thing that does equate to increases when you're able to put those resources, like Dr. Patterson said, with the English language development specialists, with the number of ELD students that we have coming in. For example, two years ago, when we had that influx of eight hundred in refugee students that came. So, that is more challenges and I'm glad that year we were able to commit to those resources. So, um, Dr. Mosalem's going to be working with Dr. Patterson. We presented on those areas. So, first of all, I'd say we think we need to make improvements. We, we need to, to do that. We're going to take that on. Um, it's going to take time. These are things that, um, you know, just like the graduation rates, it takes, it's a lagging indicator. It's going to take time moving forward. And then we're going to have to follow the state both with growth and with proficiency. Um, you know, here, we're hearing that the state is considering changes again. So, um, you know, those are challenges that we're seeing and we're hopefully advocate to the state to have a consistent measure because every time it changes, it changes the target. Having said that, we take responsibility for the fact that we want to make improvements, uh, for the benefit of our students and meet the, the needs of all our learners. So, I appreciate the comment and the question.
Just a quick comment. I mean, I keep hearing that not all students are going to go to a four year university. But the counter to that is if they're not ready and they know they're not ready and they know that they're failing, maybe they're not thinking about a four year. I mean, we, we need to maybe change, change the way we think about this. Literally, I mean, if you have a eleventh grader and knows, I mean, if they're, if they're not highly proficient in math, what are they doing in physics? What are they doing in chemistry? Uh, they're probably not reading at the level where they should be. I mean, we've seen the reports come back from the colleges, just to keep saying, that's starting to bother me for us to keep saying that not all students are going to go to a four year co- university. Our job is try to do the best possible job. I'm not saying. I'm not saying that, that's not our philosophy. Our job is to get them in a position where if they decide to go to a four-year university, God bless, if they decide they want to become, you know, a carpenter or a welder, whatever, at least they have options. But, I mean, right here, these are our numbers, right? These are, you know, this is your research. We don't have to go ask Wayne State or Henry Ford, are students, 11th graders, 12th graders, ready for college? These are the numbers that we're looking at. Our kids, our students, two out of three students aren't ready. They're not proficient in math.
So my comment wasn't to say that all students are, I agree with you that we want to give them all the opportunity, having said that we do know that we're just providing different options for our students. And we want to continue with that articulation. So we need remedial, we've presented data, and Ms. Peterson has had it in there, showing how our students are doing well as they go into the college and they're outperforming some of the other students. We've had multiple data presentations on that, that our students are doing better at, you know, for example, HFC, and she's presented other data. Having said that, we have a plan. We, I appreciate the, you know, the comments and holding us accountable to make sure that we will ensure increases. We have a plan in place through the strategic plan, through the school improvement, and we'll continue to work on it. And we're going to monitor the implementation of the new pilot math program and continue with Dr. Mosalem. I know he's going to be working hard on that articulation with the colleges so that we can align some of our programs in that area. And then Ms. Peterson, of course, with the Henry Ford College. So definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Petlicoff.
I'll drop it down then, from the high school level to the elementary level. When we look at these aggregate scores and compare them to the surrounding community and everything, of course, they're an average. So we have some schools, when we get the individual reports at each and every school, some schools that are highly performing and some schools that aren't making the dent that we would like to see in their student performance. So the schools that are really doing well are probably bringing up our averages to make, make, give an appearance that Dearborn is approaching a much higher rate of accomplishment than the surrounding communities. That being said, we know that we have some schools that are consistent, at the elementary level especially, of producing high-scoring students who are very successful. And they must be doing something different. That's all I can think of, or have some combination of things going on that I don't know if it's not necessarily being shared, but it isn't being implemented. I don't know what's going on. I don't know what the answer is, why we have. I saw in our most recent reports of test scores with the individual breakout of elementary schools, we had a couple that were really not doing well in their performance. And I don't know, and I think they've been that way for a while now, what the answer is. Do we, do we look at how we partner them with schools that are successful to try to copy some of, some of those techniques? Or is there something else going on that we need to look at? I'm confused as to why we have some schools that just seem to continually be underperforming and what the cause is.
Can I, again, I'd have to go back to the data to, I don't want to speak of specifics.
Yeah, this was a couple of months ago that we.
I think the data meetings that Dr. Patterson mentioned is where we're looking at the data sets. The second thing, and the executive directors are leading this, the student achievement, would be through the feeder track model and then the elementary and secondary forum meetings, is where there's that share. So what's happening is, and again, I have to look at some of the specifics and let them, you know, comment, and we could get a report if you.
And I don't want to point, yeah, I don't want to point out individual schools that are.
And we can look at that, but we do have those in-depth conversations and all the instructional cabinet is part of that when we have those meetings. But secondly, what you're having now is a greater share because of the feeder model. And again, it, you know, it may take some time in some areas, but they're in the high school, for example. So you have the principals, like with the feeder track, they're collaborating by going in the building. So they don't hold their meetings at central office. They go into the buildings and they're actually sharing. The other thing they do is they do walkthroughs through the schools. So not only are the administrators walking through the, and teachers, they're getting the ideas of what's going on in other schools. That was a big opening because years ago, we never had that. We didn't have teachers and administrators going to look in other buildings. And so that, I think, is going to be something, you know, with the focus with Ms. Faraj, that's a real positive area that we can lead towards improvement. Again, of course, we want to make improvement. And that's why Dr. Patterson also is looking with some of the challenges we have with, you know, when we have a large ELL population, we're looking at both growth and achievement data. And again, we still want to continue to improve and ensure that we provide a high-quality education for all of our students in all of our schools. You know, so, thank you.
I just want to make sure if we need to focus on something specific that needs extra support, that we're providing it.
Well, and for example, last year, we had Becker provide the blue ribbon, and what are the things that they're doing and sharing that with the other schools would be one example of others. Lori has been another one.